From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Okay. Good morning, Kern County family, and welcome to the Kern County Board of Supervisors' regular meeting Tuesday, September 9. We're going to begin, as we always do, with the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
We really have an extraordinary human being to lead us in our flag salute this morning. There are moments in which you realize how insignificant your own accomplishments are in this world in comparison, and this is one such moment. Kenny Pratt is a Central Valley native, a retired U.S. Army Ranger First Sergeant, and a leader forged in the most demanding and brutal environments. A master-rated jump master, an expert in high-altitude, low-opening HALO airborne operations, Kenny led reconnaissance and sniper operations in Iraq and Afghanistan. Thank you, Kenny. Kenny also served as a senior leader at the U.S. Army Ranger School, and notably played a pivotal role in guiding the successful integration of female Rangers into one of the Army's most elite programs. His military honors include three Bronze Star medals, two for service, and one for valor: the Purple Heart, the Army Commendation Medal for Valor, and the Combat Infantryman's Badge, among numerous other awards and commendations. He also holds a Bachelor's in Management Studies and an MBA from Pepperdine University. Transitioning into the corporate sector, Kenny applied his leadership to large-scale workforce operations at Amazon and The Wonderful Company. Today, as the founder and CEO of TalentBase, Kenny is building structured pathways for veterans in our community, connecting them where they are needed most and shaping the future of what workforce development looks like. His mission is clear: to ensure that those who have given so much have a community where they are valued, supported, and empowered to thrive. He also serves on the boards of the Wounded Heroes Fund and Mayor, two local nonprofits, was recently accepted into the Harvard Kennedy School's Senior Executive Fellowship Program. Congratulations. Thank you for being here. If we could please stand, the remainder of the salute, please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Thank you, Kenny.
Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for your service. Absolutely extraordinary. Thank you so much. Next, I want to ask our Animal Services Director, Nick Collin, to join us with this precious baby that you have here today for our Pet of the Week. And who do you have with you today?
Well, good morning, Madam Chair. He is fluffy, but his name is Max, and Max is only about a year old. He is still puppy, but he was brought in to the animal shelter. It's actually his second stay at the animal shelter, unfortunately. But he's going to be available for adoption to his new forever home this Friday. He's not available just yet, but he will be available Friday. And he gets along really well with other dogs, and we have noted that he's potty-trained, too.
Oh, my goodness. Housebroken.
This Friday, he's available for adoption.
And very photogenic, Supervisor Couch pointed out. You're right. Are you interested, Supervisor Couch?
I am, but I'm not to read that.
Okay. So we hope that two is a charm. What is the cost to take him home Friday?
His adoption fee is just $10.
$10, and that includes, he's housebroken already, so that's a real treat. And what else does that include, Nick?
The $10 fee includes a neuter, vaccinations, license for a year. He's going to be dewormed, he's going to have a microchip, he's going to be included with everything you need to be responsible pet owner.
With the costs today for those services, that's nearly $1,000 worth of services. Spay and neuters are over $500 now, if you can believe that. So it is extraordinary, extraordinary great deal, and just a lifelong time of love and friendship and happiness. And he's only one, so he's going to be with us for a while, and we really, really are hopeful two's a charm this time. Good luck to you, Max.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Isn't that the best? It is truly the... Supervisor Couch reminded me of my favorite doggie quote I haven't said in a while. It's an older one, and from somebody much more famous and important than me, but they said, "Dogs, we love them because they know but do not tell." And this is why we can trust them, and it's why they're man's best friend, because people cannot be trusted to do such things, unfortunately. It is what it is. Okay. So we are going to receive at this time a report taken on actions in closed session from Tuesday, August 26 at 9:00 a.m. If you recall, we did not return at 2:00 p.m. because we had our budget hearing. So traditionally, we would report on the closed-session items at our 2:00 p.m. We didn't have it, so we're going to receive the report now. Madam Clerk, Madam Counsel.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. As stated at the last Board of Supervisors meeting held on Tuesday, August 26, your board met in closed session on items 99 through 101. There were no reportable actions taken. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Graham. Appreciate that. Okay, we're going to move to our consent agenda. Consent matters begin on Page 2, and they include items 2 and 8, as well as 10 and 11. On Page 3, aside from board member announcements, all items listed 14 through 20. On Page 4, all items listed 21 through 26. On Page 5, all items listed 27 through 33. On Page 6, all items listed 34 through 42. On Page 7, all items listed 43 through 50. On Page 8, all items listed 51 through 58. Oh, excuse me. I understand Supervisor Parlier, you are pulling item 50 from consent. Is that correct? Okay. My apologies. On Page 7, items 43 through 49, not all items listed, because 50, though originally listed as consent, is being pulled by Supervisor Parlier, and we will hear it in its normal order. On Page 8, I said all items listed 51 through 58. So consent matters are considered routine and non-controversial by county staff, so we traditionally handle them in one vote to keep business moving along. If a member of the public feels otherwise and would like to comment or ask questions, or of course, a board member, as you saw Supervisor Parlier just do, now's the time to address your concerns on the consent agenda, or any input you'd like to add for consideration. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion, return to the consent matters as listed, with 50 withdrawn, of course, or pooled. Gentlemen, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
Thank you so much. Okay, that brings us to our Resolutions and Proclamations portion of this morning. And number one, which will be handled by Supervisor Peters, is a proclamation for our very own and most exciting time of the year for my kids, I can assure you that, is our Kern County Fair Days. Yay! And it looks like we have a special guest in the back. Please come on down. Good to have you, and welcome.
Yep, I would like to make a motion to approve this item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Please, in a moment, cast your votes. Thank you. I see we also have our beloved fair CEO, Mike Alcott, with us this morning. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
It is so good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you so much for your incredible generosity to this community in so many ways, which you allow so many children, who would not otherwise go to the fair, make it to the fair, by your creativity and just loving heart. So thank you, Mike. Supervisor Peters, the Flores Shores.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor to, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, officially proclaim September 17 through the 28th, 2025, as Kern County Fair Days. This is everybody's favorite time of year in Kern County, and we all go to the fair, we all have a great time. I know there's a great lineup, there's tons of events this year. Marshall Tucker Band's going to be there, who I particularly enjoy. There's going to be the PRCA rodeo, lots of great stuff. And I'm joined here today again by Mike Alcott, as well as Casey the Bull.
Hi, Casey.
This is not the first time this much bull's been in this room, but maybe in this one spot, so we thank you guys for being here, and I'll turn it over to you.
Big hats.
Okay, thank you.
You didn't mention Ashanti, Peters. I'm shocked.
Oh, yeah.
She'll also be at the fair. It's a great performance. I've seen her before.
And if you get a chance, you should go see Gospel Day on Saturday with C.C. Winans.
Oh, you're kidding me.
She's a special guest this year, and she's a CMA Award winner and gospel singer. Incredible.
Mike, I didn't know that.
It's going to be packed.
I grew up on the Winans. Oh, my goodness, that is marvelous.
She's going to be great. But thank you to all the supervisors and to the whole county of Kern for all your support over the years. As you know, the property is the county of Kerns. We lease it as a state agency from you, and you've taken good care of us. We're taking good care of the property, too. We're working on asphalting, we're working on all kinds of things to upgrade the property for you, and hopefully you'll be impressed when you see it this year at the fair. We have tons of stuff going on. Our livestock kids, over 5,000 entries. We're the largest livestock show in the state of California. I'm proud of that. We are the largest still exhibits with 6, no, 7,000, I'm sorry, 7,500 entries as of today. That's kids over 5,500 entries in juniors alone. So the community is really supporting the fair. Our carnival is bigger than ever this year, and our, you know, all of our stuff that we're putting on the stage is new, different, and we hope you guys will come out and see us. And again, thank you, I appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you.
Will Casey be there, walking around?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and ready for selfies? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. I love the artwork that's entered from the youngest children all the way up to senior citizens, who have incredible talent and photography, great eye. I just, I take my time to walk through there, and it's really special to see the perspectives of our people from literally around the world. And the talent is superb. I mean, it really is something to see.
Well, and I forgot to mention, Supervisor, that Cap K is here, and one of the nights we do donate, my board of directors donates the gate to them for six cans of food to go to their food bank, and that's on the second Tuesday, which is 26 Chelsea?
23rd.
23rd, 23rd, so.
That's sad, yeah. Excellent. Thank you, Cap K.
We love to support the community.
Awesome, all right. Good to see you, Casey. And we're excited about the fair, as we always are. Thank you, Mike, for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Couch, you're up.
Casey, you want to look over at yourself?
Real funny, Casey.
Yeah, real funny. Good to see you guys.
All right, thank you, thank you. Look forward to seeing you. So exciting. I didn't know we were the largest livestock out of 58 counties. We are the number-one ag county in America, so it's suited, but I didn't know that. That's really cool. Okay, moving on to items 3 and 4. Both will be handled by Supervisor Couch this morning. Number 3 is a proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Kern County, and also Recovery Month in Kern County, both two somber and very important matters. Thank you, Supervisor Couch, for taking them on, and I understand BHRS is here as well, and will join you at the podium. We do need motions on these.
Motion's on 3 and 4.
Second.
We have motions on 3 and 4. Can we do that together, Madam Clerk? Okay, motions on 3 and 4. We have motions and seconds. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved.
Morning, Madam Chair. You said it is a somber and serious couple of proclamations here, and I'm going to make just some brief comments. just some brief comments and turn it over to Allison, I know she has other comments and a video as well. So three, item three proclaims September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Kern County. It's signed by our Honorable Chair, Letitia Perez, dated today. And item four proclaims September 2025 as Recovery Month in Kern County, and also signed by our Honorable Chair, dated the same day. Across the country and in our community, suicide remains a significant public health risk. In 2023, over 49,000 people died by suicide in the United States. That is actually a slight decline. If you can call that good news, I guess that's an improvement. Thousands of individuals and families continue to be affected each year for every life lost. Many more consider or attempt suicide, highlighting the ongoing need for awareness, connection, and support. That is in the administrative report you got for Suicide Prevention Month. The good news is that Recovery Month celebrates the progress made by those in recovery and reinforces the message that behavioral health is essential to overall health. It affirms the prevention, excuse me, that prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover. It also recognizes the dedicated professionals who support recovery every day, helping individuals manage their ongoing challenges that recovery can bring. So thank you for your attention. I'm going to turn it over to Allison, present these two to you, and we look forward to your comments. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Couch. Good morning, Chairman Perez, members of the board. It is absolutely a challenge to follow Casey the Bull, but we're going to do our best, and we will bring some hope and some joy into our proclamations as well. So first, we're going to start with Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I think suicide obviously is an issue that affects so many in our community. It doesn't discriminate all ages, all backgrounds, all walks of life. It touches our families, our schools, our workplaces, and the entire community. And while the pain of loss is profound, it is also preventable, and with awareness, compassion, and access to care, we are really saving lives. This month is about raising awareness, fostering connections, and reminding those who are struggling that they're not alone, that help is available. It's about breaking that silence and stigma that's so often associated with mental illness and suicide. So we're very grateful to the board today, standing with us and sending that message that all lives are worth protecting, and that mental illness is really an important topic to be discussing. And I'm actually going to turn it over to our Crisis Services Administrator, Tanya Maddox, who's going to cover some of the programs available and also some of the events we have scheduled this month in recognition of suicide awareness prevention.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. As Director Burrows mentioned, my name is Tanya Maddox, and I'm the Crisis Services Administrator for Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Crisis, I'm sorry, suicide is a profound behavioral health crisis. It impacts every community, and its reach knows no boundaries. Each life lost to suicide brings with it unmeasurable grief, unanswered questions, and unimaginable impacts to those surviving with the loss. This is why suicide prevention and awareness are responsibilities we collectively share as a county dedicated to the wellness of our residents. Behind this commitment is the strength of the behavioral health community. Doctors, nurses, recovery specialists, counselors, peers, advocates, and many more, many of who are in the audience with us today, dedicate themselves every day to reducing stigma, to responding to crises, and to helping people find a path forward in their darkest times. Their work reminds us that healing is possible, and that no one has to face these struggles alone. The department has selected Rooted in Resilience as this year's theme for both Recovery and Suicide Prevention and Awareness Months. As a county, a department, and a community, we are rooted in resilience. That resilience shows in our commitment to strengthening behavioral health services, supporting prevention efforts, and creating a culture where seeking help is embraced rather than stigmatized. It shows our willingness to have open conversations about suicide and to stand together in hope, support, and solidarity. As we move through the month of September, and the rest of our lives, really, I urge you to commit to being an ally to those in need. I encourage you to check on others, especially those who don't seem to have the need to be checked on. And most importantly, I encourage you to be an encourager of hope and resilience. We do have a short video for you this morning, and you will also find, I believe, in your bag of goodies and on everyone's chair, a little calendar of events. So just to note some of the items that we have coming up, we do have Kicking It with Kern on September 17th. There's our calendar of all our wonderful events. Kicking It with Kern is a free CSUB men's soccer game, and we encourage everyone to attend that. And then also, at the end of the video, there will be a QR code up on the screen. It's also on your little cards, if you're unable to capture it. But we encourage, as I have encouraged all of you, to be beacons of hope and resilience, to share some of those words with our community. We'll be posting those words on our socials throughout the month, and we hope you can participate in encouraging our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to flip the switch a little bit and move over to Recovery Month. So thank you guys again for having us here today for National Recovery Month. This is a time, and now in its 36th year, really to celebrate and recognize the strength and determination of individuals who are working that path to recovery, and the organizations and the partners that are working, walking it with them. This year, again, as Tanya had stated, we're using the theme Rooted in Resilience, and that's really speaking to the foundation, the foundation that is set by those organizations, partnerships, and the individuals in recovery and the journey that they're traveling as well. Substance use touches all of us, whether it's ourselves, the loved ones, patients, or clients we support, no one is immune. But every day, we do see that recovery is real, families are being reunited, people are finding stability, purpose, and renewed hope, and they're doing it with the support of the community that truly cares. On behalf of our department and our partners and all of those touched by substance use, we do want to thank you guys again for this proclamation, and I'm going to turn it over to Anna Alvera, our Substance Use Disorder Administrator, who's going to share more about this month.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, everybody here and everybody at home. I'm going to tell you a little bit about our SUD treatment system. So Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services oversees a network of 29 treatment clinics here across Kern County. They offer a variety of services for treatment for substance use disorders, including outpatient treatment, more intensive outpatient care, residential treatment, and programs that offer medications for addiction treatment. Over the last year, our network has seen a 23% increase in admissions to treatment, and last fiscal year, a total of 6,741 individuals received the care that they needed. This is excellent news, as we know that only about 1 in 10 individuals with a substance use disorder actually enters treatment. This is also an exciting time in our field, as there are new evidence-based practices, including contingency management for stimulant use disorders and peer services. Contingency management involves providing incentives of increasing value every time a client provides a stimulant-negative urine drug test over the course of 24 weeks. Peer services involve providing supportive counseling delivered by certified professionals that have lived experience with behavioral health conditions. This aids in enhancing connection, increasing trust in our treatment system, and improving engagement into care. There has also been an expansion in where treatment can be accessed and is available. Any one of us can obtain medications for alcohol use disorder and/or opioid use disorder in a primary care office or a health center, in addition to a specialty SUD clinic. Also, SUD service sites will soon be available in outlying areas of our county. Today, more than ever before, there are multiple options for treatment, and it allows our treatment providers to better individualize care and provide better outcomes for members of our community. This month, in September, the department and our partner agencies are hosting a number of events, including what you may have seen happening at your county administrative building. It's lit up in purple and teal to recognize both suicide prevention and recovery months. We will also have the Move Like Mad event over at Riverwalk Park on September 13th from 6:30 in the morning to 11:00 a.m. And finally, we will wrap up the month with our Recovery Resource Fair on September 27th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. over at Mill Creek Park. This is an event where we will have a lot of resources and our treatment providers there, and it really is meant for everyone to see that with support, recovery is possible. So we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You have a fabulous team. It's obvious you have the heart and the spirit to love our neighbors into recovery and well-being. So thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you Supervisor Couch, well done. We're going to move to item number five, which is to proclaim September 2025 as Hunger Action Month in Kern County, and this proclamation will be presented by Supervisor Parlier. Flori Shores.
Motion approved.
With a motion by Supervisor Parlier.
Second.
We have a second. I think, where is Supervisor Couch? Is he still down there? Okay, got it. We can just take the vote. Hi, Jeremy, good to see you. You and your fabulous team.
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow colleagues. This morning, the Kern County Board of Supervisors is happy to proclaim September 2025 as Hunger in Action Month. In Kern County, Hunger in Action Month is part of a nationwide campaign that unites millions to raise awareness and provide nutritious food to neighbors facing hunger. As you may recall, CAP-Kay and their team have been in our chambers before on many occasions. However, on this occasion specifically, we celebrate their steadfast commitment to administering food bank services right here in Kern. CAP-Kay has the largest food bank in our region and has some very impressive and valued statistics that I'd like to share with you. In 2024, their agency distributed more than 22 million pounds of food in the county, averaging 2 million pounds of food each month while engaging over 200,000 times with those experiencing food insecurity. Day in, day out, their hard-working staff fight hunger and provide hope. I am proud to serve under Board of Directors, too, and am very pleased to have them here with us today, and I invite Jeremy Tobias, their CEO, and CAP-Kay, sorry, CAP-Kay CEO, up. And I also want to give a shout out to Food Policy Council that's here also. If you'd come around and gather over here just a little bit, I want to add one more comment, and that has to do with CAP-Kay and my personal experiences with them. I was out in California City not that long ago with Safe Haven, a wonderful community action partnership out there that provides a host of services, including food insecurity services, and they couldn't do it without CAP-Kay. And again, I was honored to be out there distributing boxes of food CAP-Kay provided. Thank you so much, Jeremy, and if you want to come up, and if the Food Policy Council would like to say a few words afterwards, that'd be wonderful. And I want to present you with a certificate, too.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Doing God's work, thank you.
Thanks. Good morning, Chair and fellow supervisors. I'm Jeremy Tobias, CEO of CAP-Kay, and I'd like to introduce a few people we have here from CAP-Kay. As you know, one of our board members, Supervisor Parlier, of course, but we also have our board chair, Maritza Jimenez is here, CAP-Kay Food Bank Administrator Kelly Lowery, and our Public Relations Manager Savannah Oats, along with several members of our Food Policy Council, which we work with very closely. September's Hunger Action Month, a time when CAP-Kay joins a national movement to raise awareness and action, take action against food insecurity in our communities. As Supervisor Parlier mentioned, in 2024, CAP-Kay distributed over 22.5 million pounds of food across Kern County, which is, as you know, is a huge county, and it's tough to serve. The only way we can do it is with partnerships and leveraging, and we partner with many, many nonprofits, religious organizations in the community to make this happen. Food insecurity is a very complex issue with far-reaching consequences affecting individuals of all ages and backgrounds. Many of our clients are the working poor, who are facing low wages and having trouble paying rent, utilities, and leaving enough money to put food in the cupboard. Hunger Action Month provides an opportunity for us to learn more about the root causes of food insecurity and advocate for policies that support food access. To build awareness of hunger across Kern County, we have prepared several opportunities for community members to get involved this month. So I'll now hand it over to Savannah Oats, who will share a few of these opportunities with you. Thanks again for allowing us to be here.
Thank you for what you do, Jeremy. Hi, Savannah.
Good morning, everybody. Like Jeremy said, we have prepared a ton of events, like behavioral health, and our friends throughout the community, with several opportunities for you guys to get involved with the fight against food insecurity. Again, it's Hunger Action Month, the key word there is "action." We need action to take place throughout the month. So starting, well, we've had several activities, but tomorrow, something specific for you all to get involved with is the KGT Feed Kern Now Drive. It initially was set up for the holiday drive, but we moved it up more appropriate to Hunger Action Month, so we'll be out at Compassion Corner from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. tomorrow. Don't bring your lunch, we will have a luncheon for you. Contact us if your office would like to purchase and preorder your lunch. And then tomorrow also is Hunger Action Day, so wear orange. I did bring some lapels for you all to wear tomorrow, and sport it, as we turn the CAO's office orange. Aside from that, like Mr. Alcott said earlier, we will be at the Kern County Fair on the 23rd. It's the best bang for your buck. You get six cans, we'll get you in for free, and you have a free concert and all of the activities for the night. But we need all of you on September 20th for our Community Box Building Day. This day will encompass, you know, a lot of camaraderie and an opportunity for you guys to fill food boxes for our senior community. So you can find all this information at capkefoundation.org/ham. But from, aside from that, I'll introduce Kelly Lowery, our Food Bank Administrator, to share a little bit more information.
Thanks, Savannah. Good morning, friends. I was here last year for Hunger Action Month, and you know, when you do the work that we do on a daily basis, sometimes you have a tendency to get focused on how great the need is. And what we know is that 1 in 5 of our Kern County neighbors experience food insecurity. We engage over 200,000 times every month, we provide emergency food, every single month, over 200,000 times to our Kern County neighbors. You heard the statistic earlier that over the course of a year, we distribute about 22 and 1/2 million pounds of food, but what does that mean? What does that equate to? It equates to 18, over 18 million meals that are provided to our neighbors every single year. And so as we stand here today, as Jeremy mentioned, we're not standing here solely on the basis of the work that we're doing, but representatives of the more than 150 agency partners that we work with across the county. So when you support CAP-Kay, when you recognize the work that CAP-Kay does, you're not just recognizing the work of myself and the colleagues with me today, but you're recognizing the churches and the schools and the other nonprofits in every community in Kern that are doing this work, not just in the month of September and Hunger Action Month, but all year long, helping families who experience food insecurity. I believe, as much as I'm standing here, that we can be the first county in America to fully address food insecurity. We have a plan for it, and a lot of great things are happening, and one of the things that's happening that I'm most proud of is the reinvigoration of the Kern County Food Policy Council. And so I want to step aside and let my friends from the Food Policy Council that we work closely with share a few thoughts about Hunger Action Month as well.
Hello, welcome.
Hello, good morning. My name is Karina Funes, and I'm a Public Policy Manager for Blue Zones Project Bakersfield. From the very beginning, we noticed that we really needed to make a change in our community when it came to food policy. Although we're only focused in Bakersfield, we knew the need goes beyond that. And so in partnership with CAP-Kay and United Way, we decided to see how we can do the work and try to reinvigorate the Kern County Food Policy Council. We're doing a lot of really great work. We're really, really focusing on how we can address food insecurity, but also how can we build on food skills? How can we try to get more farm-to-table when it comes to working in schools? How can we try to get more farm-to-table when it comes to working in schools? So, really doing a lot of really great work in our community, and this is just the beginning.
Outstanding. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you to your team. Appreciate all you guys do. Okay, we're going to move to items six and seven, which will both be handled by Supervisor Jeff Flores this morning. One is to proclaim September 2025 as Service Club Month in Kern County, and also September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in Kern County. Supervisor Flores, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, I'll make a motion for both.
Second.
We have a motion and second on both six and seven. Please cast your votes.
At this time, will the Service Club members join me at the podium?
Service Club and citizens in action. So, it's honored to present this proclamation for Service Club Recognition Month in Kern County. A little bit about Service Club. This month stands as a powerful testament to the enduring spirit of volunteerism, unity, compassion, and action, which define services, organizations around the world. Throughout 30 days of celebration, clubs of every stripe, from Rotary to Lions to Kiwanis to Optimists and beyond, will join together to raise awareness about their mission to strengthen communities and to uplift the vulnerable. So, here in Kern, we fuel the nation, we defend the nation, feed the nation, but we serve the nation. As indicative of the people behind us, your work in parks, education, healthcare, fundraisers truly lift our community, and we're very grateful as a board and as a county, so thank you for all that you do. So, at this time, I'll present the proclamation by our Board of Supervisors that dedicates September 2025 as Service Club Month in Kern County, signed by our Chairman of the Board, Letitia Perez. And we have a distinguished governor here. Doug, would you come and take the mic, and if you'd like to say a few words, I'll present this county proclamation to you. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Supervisors Peters, Parlier, Flores, Couch, and Perez. I'm Douglas Carruthers, Assistant Governor for Rotary District 5240, past president and member of Bakersfield West Rotary. It's my humble honor to receive the proclamation of September as Service Club Month for all of the service clubs and from the Board of Supervisors. For more than 120 years, Rotary's 1.2 million people of action have used their passion, energy, and intelligence to take action on sustainable projects. Rotary members are neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who believe that we have a shared responsibility to take action on the world's most persistent issues. Our more than 45,000 clubs work together to promote peace, fight disease, provide clean water sanitation and hygiene, save mothers and children, support education, grow local economies, and protect the environment. Kern County has taken part in Rotary's mission since nearly the beginning. The Rotary Club of Bakersfield, also known as Downtown Rotary, was established in May of 1920, one of the earliest in the state. Since then, within our county, it has grown into 14 clubs with more than 600 members. The impact is even larger when you include our Interact, our high school students supported by our local Rotarians. Beyond that, our district impact spans more than 60 clubs, 3,000-plus members, four counties, and countless lives impacted through the tireless service of our volunteers. And it makes sense that Rotary would come to Kern County early, because so many of Rotary's values are Kern County's values. As a son of Kern County, it's no surprise to me that this Board of Supervisors would once again proclaim September as Service Club Month, because the people of Kern are people of service, faith, and action. Maybe not all of them are in a club, but they are neighbors, siblings, parents, parishioners, and community activists who care and support whomever they see need assistance. Today, we are faced with many challenges and obstacles that seem overwhelming for any one individual to face alone. Similarly, our churches, service organizations, and other institutions which want people together to unite for good are diminishing. These two things are not mutually exclusive, they are the answer for one another. As we embark on this month of service, I encourage all the people of Kern County to think about wherein in their life they may have space for more service. Because here in Kern County, there's always a Rotary Club, church, Lions Club, Kiwanis, or even a bowling league that could use your help. Thank you very much.
Well said. You sound like you could be Governor of California. Thank you for all that you do. Mr. Louis, thank you. Good to see you. Always good to see you.
And really, all those individuals, apart from their service on their Rotaries, they're all power folks from businesses and the private sector, in every sector we have here. They're really important leaders in our community. Just wanted to thank them. Okay, last one. Here we go. At this time, will Jay Tamzy, and President and CEO of the Kern County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and his board members, will they join us to the podium?
Good to see you, Jay. Good morning.
Another important proclamation for the month. This is Hispanic Heritage Month, which is a month-long celebration of Hispanic history and culture. While we celebrate Hispanic communities beyond this month, from September 15th to October 15th, we give extra recognition to the many contributions made to the history and culture of the United States, including important advocacy work, vibrant art, culture, traditional foods, and much more. And this began as a week-long celebration back in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson, and it was expanded upon, for some context, by President Reagan 20 years later in 1988. And if you can even go back longer than that, 300 years ago, Father Francisco Garcis was here in Kern County in 1776. So, really, Hispanic Heritage Month started much longer and has continued in successive waves ever since, and we recognize that, we're thankful for that, and I'm going to have Jay come to the podium and talk about some festivals. El Grito event that's coming up next week, it's a wonderful celebration of Hispanic culture here at the Civic Center at the Liberty Bell, and he'll talk more about it. Lastly, today's Latino population of the United States is over 60 million people, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. Latinos continue to help fuel our economy, enrich our nation, as entrepreneurs, athletes, artists, entertainers, scientists, and public servants. And these are great public servants here that we have. They're a force for good, they're everywhere with events, they're supporting our agriculture, our agricultural economy, our energy economy, and all the economies in between, and we thank them. And so, on behalf of our Board of Supervisors, this proclamation is for Hispanic Heritage Month, signed by our Honorable Chairman Letitia Perez, dated this day, September 9th. I want to present this to Jay Tamzy, the President and CEO of the Hispanic Chamber. Jay, you're a great leader, and we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you so much Supervisor Flores. And good morning, Chairwoman of the Board and Board of Supervisors. As Jeff mentioned, I'm Jay Tamzy, the President and CEO of the Kern County Hispanic Chamber, and I'm proudly here representing our 1,300 members that we have in the Kern County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. It's my honor to receive this proclamation, as you have proclaimed September 15th to the 16th of October, Hispanic Heritage Month. With me, I stand proudly with our Kern County Chamber of Commerce Business Education Foundation Board Member James Galindo, and also 23 News General Manager, and also David Caracas. He is our Kern County Hispanic Chamber Business Education Foundation, the Board of Directors, and this year's Chairman of El Grito de la Lores that we were going to be talking about shortly, and President of Reliable Healthcare. And we also have Angela Mora from the Kern County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, our Executive Administrator with us here today. So, thank you for this. We're just going to talk about a few of the things that we have planned this month. We do kick off Hispanic Heritage Month tomorrow. I would like to invite you and the public to come and celebrate with us at Jim Burke Ford while we kick off Hispanic Heritage Month. We are going to have an Alive After Five mixer, business mixer, with folkory dancers and mariachi, lots of networking and camaraderie. We're also going to be honoring Mr. H.J. Sala, Mr. David Torres, Olivia Garcia, Non-Rubac Espad, and also Dr. Carlos Alvarez for their many contributions to the Hispanic community and our community in general. We also have El Grito de la Lores Supervisor Jeff Flores. I've mentioned with lots of culture, the reenactment of El Grito. We are going to provide 30 scholarships to Kern County college students and also high school graduates that evening, so it's a wonderful celebration. I invite all of you to be there. I want to thank especially Supervisor Flores. This is our 14th annual, he has not missed one Grito in 14 years, so we thank you, and we also want to thank those who are going to be attending, especially Chairwoman of the Board, who has a part in our reenactment this year. As our President of Mexico, Presidenta Shamba has proclaimed 2025 the Indigenous Women of the Year, and so, we're proud of that as well. And then, we are going to have our Small Business Academy graduation, where we graduate 40 students, and they're entrepreneurs and small business owners this month. We also are going to launch our 14th Annual Kern County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Energy and Ag Academy, starting September 26th, which is very important to our community and to our students. And with us here, we have Jennifer Pitcher Van Alstine, our facilitator with us here, who kicks that off and launches that for us. And so, for more information, just visit our website, kchcc.org. I want to thank all of you, Board of Supervisors, for attending all of our business programs and all of our events throughout the year. More specifically, I want to thank all of your staff. They represent you very well, they represent you with abundance of just outpouring and ongoing support as they represent all of you. We have a great relationship with their staff, and we have a great relationship with yourself as well, so kudos to all of you. Thank you for proclaiming Hispanic Heritage Month. And so, I want to hand this over to anyone who would like to speak. We did not bring Casey the Bull with us or any type of, you know, Mexican flag, but we did wear our huayaveras in red, white, and blue, as we all are Mexican-American. Thank you.
Good morning Supervisors. I just want to say, we are so grateful for this acknowledgement, and I'm so honored to serve with this incredible foundation and our board. And I know Jay spoke about some of the things we're doing in the community, but I'm so grateful to be here, so thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. Just really, I want to encourage everybody to come out Monday. If you haven't been there, it's a beautiful event. A lot of these scholarship recipients are first-generation and first college attendees in their family, so it's a big moment for their parents to get a bridge the gap and continue what we're doing here with the Board Education Foundation and the scholarships, so thank you.
Outstanding. Good, well done. Jay, thank you. Jay, can I also ask that you and your team stay to see the next presentation? It'd be very important for me, for you to see it, please. Thank you, Jay. There'll just be a few moments, if you would stay. I appreciate it. Okay, this is a very special moment for me to acknowledge some unsung heroes from East Bakersfield. I'm really, really proud to present a certificate of recognition this morning to Vintage Cuts Barber Shop for their contributions to the youth of Kern County, providing haircuts, school supplies, and food during their fifth annual East Bakersfield Back-to-School Event. I see you there, waiting patiently. Please come on down for this certificate of recognition. Please come on over, I want them to see you. I want to give a special thank you to Annie Ortega in my office, who on a Sunday morning, very early before church, picked me up very excitedly to come and see firsthand what this remarkable compilation of, as I said earlier, unsung heroes of this community, what they are doing for children right at the beginning of the school year. I have a few people I want to introduce to you this morning. Andreas Dre Santian, known throughout the community as Dre, a proud first-generation American, whose life is rooted in the values of hard work and dedication. Raised in East Bakersfield, Dre carries a deep sense of connection to the neighborhood that shaped him. My childhood friend, actually. Like many families, his household would have been considered under today's standard of poverty. Yet, growing up, Dre never felt poor, me neither. He learned that true wealth comes from family, resilience, and community. Dre has dedicated himself to serving others, as they too can feel the same sense of pride and belonging that shaped his childhood, a pride that cannot be measured with money or possessions, but in the strength of community and the love that we share. Frankie Cabe, am I saying that right? Frankie grew up in East Bakersfield, near Bernard and Haley, which is my neighborhood. It's also the neighborhood of our sheriff, Donnie Youngblood. As a young boy, he often stepped in to help care for his siblings, shaping his natural sense of responsibility and family-first mindset. Above all Frankie's greatest strength and what means the most to him is being a father. Fatherhood is not just a role in his life, but the foundation of who he is, guiding his choices and inspiring him to keep moving forward. Frankie has overcome many challenges and has transformed obstacles into motivation to build a better future for himself and his family. Through dedication, resilience, and determination, he became a self-employed barber, turning his craft into a career and a source of pride and service. Joy Leon is a devoted mother of six, including one child with disabilities, and a proud grandmother of eight. Widowed, she has built her life around resilience, family, and community. Born and raised in East Bakersfield, Joy grew up in families that faced poverty and hardship, experiences that shaped her compassion and drive to help others. Following in the footsteps of her late mother, Hazel Mullen, Joy has found purpose in giving back to her community by providing 10 years of volunteer services and continues back to her community by providing 10 years of volunteer services and continues to inspire those around her. Bakersfield Elite Athletic Organization is a volunteer-run nonprofit organization that operates year-round to give children and teens here in Kern County the equal opportunity to play competitive sports. Their program has helped develop young athletes and teach them about competition at an elite level. These young athletes not only have the work ethic on the field, they also work hard in the classroom with their academics and participate in community service events with the organization annually, healthcare events, back-to-school events, providing food and toys to families in need during the holidays. Bubba's Army, close-knit group of family and friends dedicated to creating a positive impact in the community. For over 10 years, they have come together to provide backpacks filled with school supplies to countless children. I have to tell you, colleagues, I was absolutely stunned to show up on a Sunday morning before church, bright and early, to see hundreds of people in line in front of the Albertsons. Albertsons is a participating sponsor with a space open so customers could come and go, but a real joint operation, a real collaboration between these community leaders and so many others who came together this morning to provide haircuts, clothing, love, food. It was truly, truly a breathtaking experience. I saw 35 barbers in one business building, every two to three feet, every single space in this facility utilized to the betterment of this community. I have never seen anything like it. Every two to three feet, a child getting a beautiful haircut in a professional, beautiful environment, with these loving souls coming around them, providing clothing, supplies. And they partnered with Bakersfield Police Department and others in this community who had tables and stands to provide love, care, and support at the beginning of the school year. It was absolutely efficient, absolutely remarkable, and I think it's just incredible to stand here and to be able to acknowledge how incredibly efficient, organized, and remarkable people are with their own resources, without, you know, the incredible fanfare of what we normally see at huge events. These are regular, everyday people, as I said earlier, unsung heroes. Over 300 haircuts provided to children in this community, East Bakersfield kids. I saw single dads, I saw families coming and getting love and care and opportunity from this group of remarkable souls. So, this is an incredible, special moment for me to provide to Vintage Cuts Barber Shop in recognition of your contributions to the youth of Kern County, providing haircuts, school supplies, and food during the 5th Annual East Bakersfield Back-to-School Event, and for exemplary public service and civic contributions to the community and to Kern County. Thank you for what you do. This is God's work, and you do it more efficiently, more smoothly, and more beautifully than anybody I've ever seen. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words? Come on, go on forward.
I just want to say, thank you for coming by. Me, I am personally grateful that I get to work with such a great team. Rita Brazza, we didn't get your name in there, but it wasn't my fault. But, thank you too, because without her, we wouldn't have had all the barbers that we had. And once again, a good example, a young lady who made it from absolutely nothing into a very good, strong, young businesswoman. But we just want to say, thank you for the acknowledgement. I want to say, thank you for the acknowledgement for my partners here, because they've been doing it for years, five years with this program, but we've been doing it for better than 15 years. And it's a great thing, and our community needs a lot of help at times, and we do what we can, but hopefully in the future, we could all work together to get these kids more of what they need. And for me, if you guys need my help to better our community, the East Bakersfield District, please let me know. Everybody has my phone number, easy to find. So, thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Appreciate you very much. Andres, be careful what you ask for, because since she said that, we will be calling on you through a new, a brand-new collaboration with Sheriff Donnie Youngblood for the East Bakersfield Sheriff's Activities League. We're going to revamp that program. We'll be calling on the community for new coaches. We're going to be painting that building and relaunching something very exciting in East Bakersfield. So, since you offered, I'm going to hit you up. Thank you.
I helped out before.
I know, our sheriff will appreciate it, too. That's the best of us, Supervisor Couch. Okay, moving along now. Thank you for all your patience. That was a long morning of resolutions and proclamations, but a really nice slice of who we are and what our values are, which is good reminders of what we should be focused on here as a community. We're going to move forward to item number 12, which is the public presentations portion of this morning. This portion of the agenda is reserved for matters that are within the jurisdiction of Kern County's Board of Supervisors, within our agenda of what we have power and authority over, but not on today's specific agenda. So, this is an opportunity to come and address us, please. I ask to state and spell your name for the record. We do have a two-minute time limit that we ask your grace in acknowledging. I know that's not a perfect system, but certainly, we ask for your acknowledgement of that as we move forward on our agenda today. So, good morning. Very good to see you. Welcome. The floor is yours. Your name for the record, please.
Dennis McClain, M.C., capital L-E-A-N.
Morning, Dennis.
Morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, and Staff. Thank you for listening to our concerns. We are opposed to the upcoming special election for Prop 50 voter redistricting. First, California Election Code 9040 states any initiative proposed to "we, the people", must be presented to us 131 days before the election occurs, meaning a special election in November is completely illegal. Secondly, Governor Newsom's Prop 50 is an effort to divide the Central Valley and gain national political attention for his upcoming campaign. His leadership leads the nation in highest tax rate, illegal immigration, crime, and a complete failure in our public education system. What is the cost of this special election to the state and to our county? We believe that money could be better spent on our decaying infrastructure, such as water, power, housing, and our roadways, and many, many more items. With that said, I suggest your Board join the City of Lodi in adopting a resolution opposing Proposition 15. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Next will be Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Dennis. Morning, Jess.
Good morning. Gavin Newsom's power grab, aka Elections Rigging Act, aka Proposition 50, should be an obvious no vote. State law requires a bill to be in print for 30 days before being voted on. This didn't happen. None of those people had it before them. In 2008, Proposition 11 established an independent citizens' redistricting commission to be added to our Constitution to draw Assembly and Senate districts. Prop 20 in 2010 extended the CRA's authority to boost transparency and citizen involvement. This part of the Constitution was suspended in order to push Prop 50. That's a power play, and it's illegal. State law prohibits initiatives from posing questions, more than one question, on the ballot, exactly as Prop 50 does. It has two questions you have to answer to get that through. That's, again, is a violation of our state law. Proposition 55 bypasses the CRC and is designed for partisan gerrymandering, rendering approximately 55% of California without congressional representation. Prop 50 destroys California Democratic Republic. Again, "we, the people" asks that the Board follow Lodi's lead and write a resolution to oppose Prop 50, let Gavin know he should start acting like a governor, not a dictator. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning to the Supervisors. My name is Charles Shin, S-H-I-N-N. I'm a retired Marine and a concerned citizen. What I have in front of me right here is a representation of a double canvas that Concerned Citizens started last spring. We looked at the NCOA, National Change of Address, and focused on people who have moved out of the state of California. We wanted to get a canvas going that, you know, wasn't just people living down the street from their former residence. These are Kern County residents. They're still registered on our elections voter rolls. We did a double canvas. After we canvassed the first time with the walking canvas, we canvassed by mail. So, these folks in this folder here are actually double canvassed. The results of this, we have about 80% of the canvas still registered to vote in Kern County. They're receiving ballots. They're having undeliverable ballots returned to the Elections Department. I counted in a small sample, 29 undeliverable ballots returned. There's 220 that are issued ballots that never returned back, so those are active voter issued, not returned. This all adds up to a large amount of money that's just wasted. We have folks, you know, that could better spend that money somewhere else in the county. We've got a lot of needs. There's also 74 folks that had blank information where they could have, where they were delivered a ballot, but there's no ballot information available. It's just a blank space. So, we would like to see this stuff cleaned up on our voter rolls. Thank you.
Last name is Spratt, S-P-R-A-T-T, first name Kenny. Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm Kenny Spratt, First Sergeant, U.S. Army, retired, and the founder of TalentBase. Serving this country was one of the greatest privileges of my life, and only in America do we have the honor of wearing the uniform and coming home and continuing to serve our communities in different ways, and that's what brings me here today. Kern County is at a crossroads. Industries are shifting, and with that comes the need to transition and upskill our community. At the same time, we've lost more than 10,000 veterans to outmigration in the past decade, nearly a quarter of our veteran population, when their leadership and their skills are needed more than ever. That's why I started this work, to build structured pathways that support veteran workforce integration. Programs like the Skillbridge Program, which connects transitioning service members directly to employers, already exist with an 85% success rate. They've been around for years, but not one single employer in our community is using them. That's a missed opportunity that we cannot continue to let happen. The good news is that momentum is building, and we're working with community leaders, Workforce Development Board, the Veteran Services, and KCCD, with pending support from the Kern Coalition. We're preparing to launch the First Veterans Career Bridge Program in January. This is a community-driven, structured program that'll provide professional development and connect veterans directly with employers through paid internships, creating predictable pathways that fuel our economy and not only retain, but attract veterans into Kern County. But this only works if we work and do it together. It takes all of us, leaders, educators, employers, and neighbors, putting the same direction. And I invite you all to be a part of this, and I'd love to connect and meet with you all, and help make Kern County a place where supporting veterans isn't just a slogan, it's a commitment that fuels growth and defines who we are as a community. So, thank you for your time, and Rangers lead the way.
Rangers lead the way. I love that. Oh, I love that. I would love to meet with you and discuss, you know, what I can do. Jose can connect us. I appreciate it. Thank you for all you do, sir. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Dave Wescott, W-E-S-C-O-T-T. This Board has heard that there's an attack on mail-in voting, and it's solely coming from Trump and then permeating down. The process of voting in California should not be controversial, and there should be no doubt. Why? Because mail-in ballot voter fraud is not a problem in this country. How do we know this? The number of reported mail-in ballot fraud cases in the U.S. for the 2020 election was 14. This is per the American Statistical Association. Mail-in ballots make it easier for registered voters to vote. It allows our disabled voters to more easily vote. It allows our non-car-owning voters to more easily vote. It allows our deployed military to vote. Currently, a woman in Orange County is doing court today on voter fraud for registering her dog to vote in the national election last year.
I saw that.
That ballot was rejected, as it should be. That's how it works. Next, Trump has attacked voting machines. If he's right, then why did Fox and Newsmax pay out $780 million and $67 million in defamation lawsuits for agreeing with him and furthering and promoting his lie to you? Even the Heritage Foundation, a conservative authority, did a study that showed proven general voter fraud for the years of 1980 to 2020, covering 40 years, that covered elections from the federal presidential election all the way down to city elections. They only found 1,100 instances. That can be found at congress.gov. This means there is no loss of honesty or integrity. All this does is disenfranchise voters. Furthermore, for those that said two weeks ago that the states are a mere vehicle for the federal government in relation to running elections, the Constitution gives the states the authority to run elections with oversight from Congress, and the president has no direct role. Additionally, our Kern County Elections Department does a great job. They are well-trained to spot voter fraud, and as a multi-time elections worker in myself, they do a great job in training. Lastly, I request that this Board no longer allows public comment on subjects not under their authority of the county boards, such as state election statutes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see Mr. Lin Festy making his way. Do we have any other public comment interest this morning? We have another? Okay, very good. Oh, I see a couple.
Hello, Paul Lin Festy, L-I-N-F-E-S-T-Y, District 3, Jeff Flores' district. So, I thought I'd open with a joke today. That's been done several times this past year. So, what borders on insanity? Mexico and Canada. Anyway, it was rather ironic that when President Trump was promising an executive order involving elections, Newsmax settled out of court a lawsuit with Dominion that resulted in a payout of nearly $800 million, another big win for Dominion against the liespread that the 2020 elections were fraudulent. When Mojave County in Arizona ran a three-day test run showing that the process of hand counting ballots was not inaccurate, a system as using the tabulators. Numerous errors were caught, and it took three days to even count just 800 ballots. It showed how hand counting is typically expensive, inaccurate, and impractical. Trump also claimed that the U.S. is the only nation that allows votes by mail, but that's not true. There are 34 countries that allow postal voting in some form, including Canada, the United Kingdom, Australia, and Germany. And later, he called it a Democratic, he called it a Democratic Party scam, and yet, just a few days later on the Sean Hannity Show, he clarified by saying that Democrats are more apt to vote by mail than Republicans. So, is this a case of, is this a charge of fraud, or is it an attempt at voter suppression? Speaking of which, the American Civil Liberties Union's Voting Rights Project is currently litigating voter suppression and minority vote dilution cases in over a dozen states, coast to coast, in every region of the country. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you, Paul. We have other public comment this morning? I thought I saw two more hands. Good morning, ma'am. When you come forward, could you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Thomasina Rivers. Do you need me to spell it as well?
Please.
T-O-M-A-S-E-N-A, last name Rivers, R-I-V-E-R-S.
That's a unique spelling of Thomasina.
I got it from my mom. Actually, Thumbelina gave it to me, or Three Lives of Thomasina.
It's beautiful.
Oh, my time's running. Okay, I'm sorry to bring, well, I'm not sorry to do that, but I don't want to bring a dark cloud, okay? So, yes, Letitia Perez, a long time ago in 2017, you were in the district where the welfare department was, and I came to you for help, and then I was told that there's nothing your office can do. Mind you, 2017, I went from 2017 to October. Mind you, 2017, I went from 2017 to October 2018 with no cow works. They tried to stop my food stamps, but they stopped my cow works, and I came to you for help. But did you know that I didn't get help from you? And then I came in, I didn't get help from you though. Forgive me if I sound any kind of disrespect, I'm not trying to, I'm on the timeframe. So at this note, on October 2nd, 2018, I won that case against cow works, and had I had gotten help, they would have helped me sooner. They had perjured themselves in court by withholding regulations showing that if a child in common's father made over 100 hours, that I was entitled to my cow work. So not only did they take it from me, they also tried to go ahead and take money out the back pay. So, from this point on, I just want to have all these witnesses, because I will be now filing a federal lawsuit against Kern County for the actions of the welfare department. That's only on step one, and I'm also here for these gentlemen who were speaking about voting. You can file a federal lawsuit against your Board of Supervisors for voting violation, and if you have that evidence, I would like to give you this packet before I leave, or you also can go down to 19th Street to the District Courthouse, and they will give you a packet for free. So that's what I'm here for today, is because I need these witnesses, I need everyone to know that I came to you, and I've came here, and I've asked for help, and I have been through pain and suffering since 2015, since I had my son, and since you're so into the women with disabled children, I have two that needed me. But instead, I isolated myself in a garage, trying to figure out what was going on. So, I'm letting you guys know today, this is what I will be doing, and if I get into the finding about voter rights and things like that, then I will also help these gentlemen if that's what they require. So I hope you guys have a wonderful day, and I apologize for bringing a dark cloud.
It's okay. Thank you ma'am. Hello, sir, welcome.
Good morning.
Could you state and spell your name, please?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Mike, M-I-K-E, last name Gui, G-U-I-L-L-E-N.
Thank you, Mike.
District 5 staff told me I had the right to return to the apartment, to my apartment. They even said that they would send a letter out to the lander confirming it. That was after they scrutinized my documentation. Letters were pulled back. Later, they pulled back and claimed I was misrepresenting the law, misrepresenting the law, but the contradiction is theirs, not mine. The law is very, very clear. Only the sheriffs, marshal, and only with the court order can remove someone from their home. That never happened in my case, instead, court compliance, which is not law enforcement, had me arrested, and the former property owner physically forced me out. Neither had the authority to do that. In plain terms, this is not due process. It is unlawful entry carried out under color of law. It is current, if Kern County says they're going to work within the law, then it must start with the basic truth. Lawful tenants should never be treated as if they have fewer rights than trespassers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this morning? Okay, we're going to close the public comment portion of this morning, and we're going to move to board member announcements or reports. Supervisor Peters, are you plugged in for this morning, for board member announcements?
Yeah, I was actually in for a public comment, but that's okay.
Okay.
I'll just respond to some of this.
Oh, excuse me.
No problem, no, I just wanted to talk about Prop 50 a little bit. Before I do, I actually wanted to respond to Mr. Lin Festy's joke. I appreciate a good joke, but if Mexico's bordering on insanity, I wonder if that means their residents are going crazy, because they're sure a lot trying to get across the border and get over here. So, as was brought up about Prop 50, so in 2008, Prop 11 was the Voters First Act, and that created the California Citizens Redistricting Commission to allow us to basically take those state offices and redistrict them under that independent commission. And then Prop 20 in 2010 expanded that to congressional districts. But now Governor Newsom is proposing Prop 50, which would directly circumvent the will of the voters. People of our state recently passed Prop 36 in an effort to force the state to finally hold criminals accountable, and our governor refused to fund the direct will of the people, citing our roughly $20 billion deficit we're facing. Not only has he refused to spend the taxpayers' money to implement the will of the taxpayers to support our law enforcement and to make our state safer, but he's championing a proposition that would cost the state upwards of $200 million to actively circumvent the will of the people and use their power that has been expressly withheld from the state in a zero-sum game of political brinksmanship. These new lines were drawn hastily in backrooms by no less partisan a group than the Democratic Congressional Campaign Committee. This is the textbook definition of unfree, unfair elections. To be clear, these actions would be unacceptable from any political party anywhere in our nation, but as we are in California, I believe we have a duty to call out these unjust egregious actions as we see them. As such, I would like to ask our staff to bring this item back for a vote to formally oppose this overreach at our next scheduled meeting. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Peters. Do we need a motion for that referral? Counsel?
Good morning. Yes, I would ask for a motion on that item.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to that effect. Thank you, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to bring back the matter, and that at later time, we will vote as to whether we support it or not, is that correct? So this is a vote supporting Supervisor Peters' motion, correct? Okay, there we go. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, Supervisor Parlier.
Thank you Madam Chair. I received a very nice letter from one of my constituents, Michelle Slade, just giving a shout-out and a thanks to Public Works, and specifically Efron Perez for all of his hard work on his road activities, and specifically Mojave, and Public Works is just doing a wonderful job out there, and specifically this gentleman. I just want to give him thanks for all the hard work he's doing for the citizens of Kern County, and specifically East Kern. Now, on another note, Madam Chair, I'd like to end today's meeting in recognition of Yolanda Ochoa. She was just a wonderful woman that died unexpectedly, unexpectedly. I served with her on the CAP-K board. She has participated in several things to support our community. She was on CAP-K for 25 years, Salvation Army Food Coordinator for Lake Isabella, former outreach coordinator at Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistance, a member of the Kern River Valley Bridge, Kern River Valley Collaborative, and her daughter and herself were just voted recently and re-elected to co-mayors of Kern Whiskey Flat Days. And I also want to thank Supervisor Peters for allowing me, since she was a constituent of District 1, to close in her honor because of my relationship with her on the board of CAP-K, and I thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Parlier. Supervisor Flores, you have comments now?
Thank you. My condolences to constituent Supervisor Peterson Parlier. I want to dovetail on what Supervisor Parlier said in terms of gratitude and thanks to staff, and I'll get to that in a second. First, a lot of thank-yous today. First, I'd like to thank Chief Bill Dickinson for your tour with my staff, Garrison Murado, Vivian Cow, Crossroads Facility. We saw so much that they learned about restoration and public safety and skills and development, that these people will have hope, and thanks to all our probation officers for the work they do on a daily basis. So thank you, Chief. Secondly, I want to thank our esteemed Sheriff Donnie Youngblood and our undersheriff Larry McCurton in our Public Works Department, Josh Champlin and Jacob Clayton. You know, of course, both entities do great work on a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly, yearly, but when the two are combined in an exercise, in an operation, it's exponentially greater and effective. And so, two weeks ago, they did multiple districts, they did a sweep of homeless encampments, not down and out, but trespassing, illegal, dirty, unsafe. I can go on and on, and they swept 5,000 pounds of trash and debris, weapons, saw a very bad knife, in addition to the axes and shanks I've seen before. So these places are dangerous, the citizens have had enough. In those arrests, there were 24 arrests, not for the act, not for the illegal act that was before us, but pre-existing warrants. 20 misdemeanors, four felonies. These places are dangerous, and so I want to give you a shout-out. We're going to continue this effort, I'm working with the C.A.O.'s office for continued funding. The citizens have had enough. This is one element in the strategy of dealing with the situation, so I just want to express my gratitude. And then, you know, as a metric, we don't do these for likes, but as a metric, on social media, it's got over 115,000 views, over 1,500 likes. The people of this county support this strategy. People have had enough, people want safe neighborhoods, people want safe streets, our schools, our churches, our business corridors, they deserve it, and we will not let up. I will fight with every iota of my being to continue this. Again, this is just one spoke of a greater strategy, but thank you, thank you Sheriff, thank you Public Works, and thank you C.A.O. for the budget aspect of this, and so, thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you Supervisor Flores. Looks like that brings us to the end of our board member announcements or reports. We're going to move on to the matter that Supervisor Parlier pulled from consent, item number 50, which is a proposed sole source agreement with Flock Group Inc. containing non-standard terms and conditions for automated license plate reader camera system in an amount not to exceed $96,000. Before we hear from staff Supervisor Parlier, could you give us a sense of what you're thinking and what you'd like to know and find out by pulling this matter?
Well, really, I don't think it's necessary to bring staff down. I just want to dovetail what Supervisor Flores said and give a shout-out, I guess that shout-out day, back to the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Youngblood, Donnie, and your team, specifically Chief Kessler, Lieutenant Vic Garcia, and their staff in East Kern. This item was brought to me a few months ago in providing safety. Look, we all want thriving businesses in neighborhoods, but we can't do it without security. And when you're talking about an area of about 1,500 square miles, it's pretty lean for law enforcement services out there, and these flock cameras are really going to help, be a force multiplier to stop criminals in a host of activities. And I also want to thank the C.A.O. and your team for recognizing the, just the ability for these things to help our communities, and thank you for helping for the funding that goes along with this. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Motion, motion approved.
We have a motion with those comments. I have to ask, are there any members of the public who would like to weigh in on item 50? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, return to the board for comment or action.
Second.
We do have a motion. We now have a second. Gentlemen, any comments? Okay, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, thank you. This brings us to the end of our AM session. We will be back at 2:00 P.M. for our afternoon session, and I would entertain a motion from Supervisor Parlier as we are closing in the honor of Yolanda Ochoa, a remarkable citizen and servant of Kern County.
Madam Chair, I'd like to close the meeting in honor of Yolanda, just a wonderful person. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.